Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting this Monday evening, June 20th, 5:30 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order at this time. Madam Clerk, would you please fill the role?
With pleasure, Ms.
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Gofels.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Here.
And Mayor Bonilla.
Yes, here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, welcome back, everybody. We're excited to be here in person with options for those to choose who choose not to be here in person and still participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. One is to complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Number two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber, or in this case, is there some other place to sign in? Still at the back of the council chamber.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And/or three, scan the QR code to sign up, and that code is located on a sign at the back of the chambers. If participating remotely, use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to mute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. We're going to start tonight with a closed session, actually two closed-session items, and I'll read the titles of these closed-session items, and I'll ask if, well, each one, I guess, and I'll ask for, Mr. City Attorney, should I ask for a public comment on each one of the two closed-session items?
Sure, that would be fine.
Thank you. So, item one under the closed session is going to be conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation on workers, it's a workers' compensation issue. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item before we go to closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I have no speakers here, and there's nobody with their hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And now for item two, conference with legal counseling regarding counsel regarding existing litigation. And once again, do we have any public commenters?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There are none. So, with that, we're going to close, and we're going to go to the closed session. We'll be back for item three when we finish the closed session. Thank you.
Just sent a message to Ling, so he can...
Are we back, Patrice? Are we going to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
There's no need.
Okay.
Oh, you have to, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Well, okay, so for the public, we're back from our study session, our closed session, and we're going now proceed with item three, which is presentation from our Code Enforcement Manager, Christine Civiletti. The title is Property Owner Obligations with Respect to Tenants Displaced from Unsafe or Substandard Units. Thank you, Christine.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bonilla and councilmembers. My name is Christine Civiletti. I'm the Code Enforcement Manager with the City of San Mateo. Joining me tonight are Community Development Director Christina Horusberger, Assistant City Attorney Ling Nguyen, and Special Attorney Lance Baer, all of whom worked with me on this subject matter and are available for questions along the way. The topic of the study session tonight is to present information regarding San Mateo Municipal Code 7.15, also known as the relocation ordinance, including letting you know how it's been working, the current available suite of penalties, potential tools that may assist staff, and then to seek direction from council. A brief background. As you may recall, council adopted this ordinance in 2019 to provide protection to tenants who live in dangerous and substandard conditions. In 2021, council set a goal to strengthen the penalties for the relocation ordinance and later asked to receive detailed information about the currently available penalties. So first, I'd like to start with how the ordinance is working. So as noted in my report, since its adoption, code enforcement has utilized the relocation ordinance on 16 separate occasions. Nine temporary relocations, which were due to correctable substandard conditions such as mold and/or pest infestations, and all of the tenants were able to return. Seven permanent relocations due to illegal, substandard, and/or unsafe conditions. And there have been no known cases of repeat offenders since implementation of the ordinance. So I want to briefly show you some examples of what we have encountered since the adoption of the ordinance. The photos on the left show visible mold conditions that were observed in two separate temporary relocation cases. As you may know, the proper remediation of mold requires that areas of the home be cordoned off from the occupants, almost always requiring the tenants to vacate for a short duration. These relocations are typically less than 90 days. During COVID, we did have one temporary relocation that went over the duration due to supply chain issues. In that instance, the property owner continued to pay the tenants' temporary accommodations throughout the process, and the tenant was able to return. The photos on the right show two permanent relocations. One of these was an unpermitted garage with alterations that were substandard. A garage may be legalized as an ADU. However, it must meet safety standards, and as a practical matter, the process from designed to completion, completed construction would likely take longer than 90 days. So now we'll move on to the currently available penalties. We have, first is administrative citations. Administrative citations are a nuisance abatement fee ranging from $100 to $500 per violation per day. Because this is a nuisance abatement fee, staff tracks time and associated costs related to the enforcement. Then we have civil penalties. Civil penalties can result in fines ranging from $10 to $10,000 per day. A hearing officer is required, and the hearing officer may be appointed by the city manager. Current staff is not aware of this process previously being used for code enforcement activities. The administrative compliance order. The administrative compliance order is when a property owner fails to comply with an order issued by a code enforcement officer. It can result in a hearing where penalties may be ordered of up to $1,000 per day per violation. I am aware of one case since I've been with the City of San Mateo where this penalty was used. Mr. Baer has extensive experience with this process in his special attorney role with other jurisdictions. Criminal prosecution. Criminal prosecution requires a criminal complaint filed by the city attorney's office. This process has been used for code enforcement cases. Injunctive relief also requires, it requires civil action to be filed by the city attorney's office. This process has also been used for code enforcement cases. Currently, the appeals and hearings associated with administrative penalties are the duties of the Community Relations Commission. As outlined in the staff report, the technical building codes, along with the property maintenance code, oh, sorry, property maintenance and health and safety codes, should be heard by a person or body who are qualified by experience and training to hear matters pertaining to these codes. Currently, CRC members are not required to have this specific training or knowledge, making the appeals project, process problematic, and this has resulted in code enforcement staff not fully utilizing the administrative penalties. Staff reached out to some of our neighboring jurisdictions to see how our process compares to theirs. Oops, sorry. Let me go back. What we found are that South San Francisco, Redwood City, Burlingame, San Mateo County, and East Palo Alto all use a hearing officer as their first layer of appeal, with East Palo Alto also having the city council designated as their second layer of appeal. An interesting note, when I contacted San Mateo County to ask specifically how their process for the relocation ordinance was going, I was informed that county code enforcement has not had an opportunity to use the relocation ordinance as of yet. Potential additional enforcement tools. The Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, we call the Dangerous Buildings Code. This code is specific to the enforcement of dangerous buildings and is more comprehensive in its definition and procedures than the code provision that staff currently relies on, which is the International Property Maintenance Code. This code provision has been adopted by South San Francisco, Burlingame, and East Palo Alto, while Redwood City has adopted its own version of this code. As shown in the photos on the left are examples of some permanent relocations that were due to substandard housing conditions. On the right are dangerous buildings that were required to be vacated and were red-tagged. As you can see, not all substandard conditions are dangerous buildings, but all dangerous buildings will result in relocations. To summarize the amendments and tools that would assist code enforcement, as I previously mentioned, staff has not had any cases with repeat offenders since the adoption of the relocation ordinance, and we believe that Title I offers adequate remedies to address repeat offenders when appropriate. However, there are two key areas that staff believes may be improved, which include amending the appeal process for administrative citations to add an impartial hearing officer, with the decisions of that hearing officer being appealable to city council, and then the decisions of city council being appealable to Superior Court for judicial review. This is consistent with the current appeals process for the civil penalties, with the only change being the hearing officer rather than the CRC. And second, the adoption of an ordinance that comprehensively addresses dangerous buildings. So the questions for council we have tonight are, are any additional penalty provisions required for effective enforcement of Chapter 7.5, the relocation ordinance? Should the city adopt an impartial hearing officer review procedure with city council being the final appeal body? Or I should, I should correct that and say with city council being the second layer of the appeal body. And should city staff begin working on a draft ordinance to adopt the Dangerous Building Code? And is there any additional direction to staff?
I just have a question. Who are you, who would you envision to be the impartial hearing officer? Wouldn't be the same person that does the citation.
So the hearing officer, we would look to have a list of ad hoc people on contract so that we could rotate it around. You wouldn't want to, the technical codes don't allow it to be a city employee, so it has to be impartial outside. So we would start to have to research on the available...
Okay. Sorry. Because I was envisioning if it was the same person giving the citation, then they're certainly vested in that process. So I'm glad to know it's somebody independent. What do you normally do? Is it perhaps somebody that does mediations at the courthouse, and you can use that list? Or what's been done in the past to actually find that independent person that you envision would be reviewing the appeals?
So my experience was we, in my previous jurisdiction, we used a list of retired attorneys. Some were retired judges. I would like to defer, though, to Ling and Lance for their opinions on that because they have a broader perspective on who would be available for that.
Before we do that, so just very, very quickly, I think there's due process considerations at play where the initial, the entity, the person that's issuing the citation cannot be the same entity that's actually ruling on the validity of their own citation, number one. And then number two, there's case law that requires basically a rotation of hearing officers so as to ensure that a particular hearing officer, and on a set schedule with a set timeframe, so as to ensure that the hearing officer doesn't feel beholden to the city in making decisions on appeal. And with that, I'll turn to Ling for any additional comments.
Councilmember Pappan. The city would utilize something similar to what the county has. As persona has indicated, it would be hearing officers on a panel that are rotated out so they don't feel beholden to ensure that their decisions aren't biased in any manner as well. To procure one, we'd probably have to solicit and advertise, see who's available and who's out there. And it does not mean we can't piggyback on other hearing officers with, that do similar work with different jurisdictions. We just need to ensure that they're not employees.
Yeah, if I may, through the, my question is just where's the panel come from? That's all. And I'm not hearing where you'd find the panel.
I believe that's something that staff and I would have to figure out. I don't have anything off the top of my head.
It would be, the city would issue like a request for proposals and obtain like a list of hearing officers.
Like JAMS and dispute or one of those?
Not necessarily JAMS, but it could be retired attorneys, could be other retired city employees, or someone just with experience in the field acting as a hearing officer.
So you'd create your own panel?
There would be a rotate, the city can create its own list, rotating lots of hearing officers, but maybe perhaps Lance has some additional comments.
I think you're asking panel, and we're talking about a singular hearing officer to make the decision.
Once we say to you, yes, it sounds like a great idea to have an impartial hearing.
Those panel people, yes.
How do you find that person? So I was just taking it one step further. By the way, you did a great job.
Thank you.
I just want you to know, this was very, very clear and very thorough. I just had that one additional question of where do you find the bloke or the gal to do it?
Councilmember, there are different...
Identify yourself, please.
Excuse me, oh, yes, I'm Lance Baer, Special Counsel to the city attorney's office. And I work in a number of different jurisdictions involved in various types of city attorney work. A lot of it is code enforcement. I actually have the privilege of serving as the hearing officer in some cities myself. Obviously, that is not something that I could do for the City of San Mateo, but one of the ways that cities have gotten their RFPs is through the city attorney organizations and other local area bar associations, et cetera, and developing a list through that. And there's really a fairly good body of knowledge of how to seek out and obtain impartial hearing officers.
Great. Because we all can get pricey. That was why I was asking. So that's why I was wondering where it came from. So it sounds like this is not JAMS and dispute that has, you know, some pretty significant fees associated with it. So I'm glad to know that it's something other than that option.
Right. And there are some, some volunteers, but there are also programs where there's compensation involved, but it is not nearly the amount that you would see in JAMS or mediation or other types of alternative dispute resolution. It's significantly smaller hourly, and it's significantly less commitment in time.
Thank you. Other council members, questions? No? Do you want to start? Oh, go ahead.
I have a question. So I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding that it seems like, you know, there is a lot of interest from the council on, you know, supporting this process as fully as we can, and, and it's good to know that we have all these levers sort of already at our fingertips, right? And so I just want to make sure that, that I'm, my takeaway is that essentially the administrative appeal procedures, the, you know, all the various options, that the civil penalties, the compliance order, the citations, like all of those, the criminal proceedings, all of those are already on the menu, per se. So we wouldn't, if, if it was called for, for, in a case where, you know, the situation needed to be elevated, that that would, there was legal mechanisms would be in place if we chose to pursue them. So no change to the code would be necessary or the existing ordinance. So no change to the code would be necessary, or the existing ordinance is necessary to avail ourselves of those possible options. Am I, is, is that accurate?
So I'll, I'll start. I mean, the, the lists indicated in the staff report, the various chapters in Title I, those are existing codes. You know, criminal penalties, the civil penalties, injunctive relief, administrative citations ordinance, those are existing ordinances. So within the confines of the procedures that are part of the existing code, we can use them. So what staff is suggesting is indicated is a procedural change to administrative citations ordinance so that it can be more readily used and more, more, it's more practical. So that's appealed to, an appeal to a hearing officer with technical expertise. You can use it now, but it's just that an appeal would be to the CRC and then to the council. The CRC doesn't necessarily have that technical expertise. That's number one. Number two is another ordinance is being suggested about the Dangerous Buildings Code, like potentially adopting that, which staff can speak to further.
Well, I, I think, I find it encouraging, you know, the, the kind of introspection that's happened in, in this process and the way that we're trying to, you know, to work as efficiently as possible. I mean, it sounds like the, the other, you know, the penalties, if we wanted to use them, were already there, so the triggers are there. So, yeah, I just, I, I think I understand where we are. No other questions?
Thank you. Anybody else? No questions? Okay, anybody in one lead with comments working off the list? Oh, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have no in-person public comment. I do have one public commenter on Zoom, and the first speaker is Justin Alley. Justin, go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi, Sveas. I'm Justin Alley, a resident, and I am speaking.
Sorry, wrong button. Go ahead, please, Justin, sorry about that. Please start over.
Okay, so you can hear me all right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, well, okay, first off, I just want to thank you for this study, study session. You should be commended for your diligence in looking for ways to strengthen the red-tag relocation ordinance. And I think we should all be rightfully proud of this ordinance. The other side of that, however, is that our pride is rooted in the now well-proven impactfulness of the policy. Since it was adopted in 2019, I think we have all been surprised by how many cases it has applied to, and a number of these have truly shocked the conscience. So had it not been for the red-tag relocation ordinance, these cases might never have surfaced, and there certainly would not have been as good of a remedy at our disposal. And so I look forward to seeing in what ways we continue to add to this useful policy. It is in that same spirit that I want to implore the council to take swift action around some of the other abuses aimed at tenants. Since the COVID evictions moratoria expired, we have seen a sharp uptick in evictions. What is more, new legal aid data show that a large number of these evictions have been following similar lines of evicting people for so-called substantial renovations. Therefore, we are renewing our call for the council to advance a policy around ending the abuse of the spurious front evictions loophole of AB 1482. And time truly is of the essence, as low-income renters are getting buffeted right now. So we need to do all we can to make sure that they don't slip through the cracks, as some people were slipping through the cracks before red tag. And just as with the red tag ordinance, there are prudent and straightforward steps we can take to address the problem. As before, we have other models to follow. Cities like Los Angeles, Laguna Beach, and South Pasadena have instituted policies to crack down on red evictions. We should move with all due haste, follow in the steps of these other cities. The longer we wait, the more tenants will needlessly suffer when there was something we could have done. So again, let's continue to build on the red-tag relocation ordinance, and let's strengthen the net of protections so there are fewer and fewer holes through which tenants can slip. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And now back to the council. I think we should go to the list, considering the fact that under item two, the council would not be the final body, but the secondary body with final appeal going to the county Superior Court. Your comments?
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of amending our code to have an impartial hearing officer be the first review, and then the city council be the second review.
Okay, and on item three?
And on item three, yeah, I'm okay with referring to an existing Dangerous Buildings Code so that you have clearer definitions of what those, what kinds of conditions would fall within that definition.
I agree with Deputy Mayor Papin on this.
Thank you.
I also agree.
I agree too.
Thank you, council member Goldfoss. And I agree too. I think that the idea that we should prepare a list of impartial hearing officers to review these cases, and with the consideration that the city council would be the secondary appeal body while the Superior Court would be the final decision maker. Also, that we need to prepare a draft ordinance for the Dangerous Building Code. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, one more question?
Yeah. So is there additional direction to staff? The speaker just asked a question about the timeline for our bringing back their strategic goal of, of strengthening tenant protections, and I wanted to, I wanted to understand where we are in terms of prioritizing that goal.
So I'll, I'll get started, and then Christina can jump in if she has any additional comments. Excuse me. So the AB 1482 tenant protection item is on the strategic plan for July 1st of, of 2022 for the, for the next fiscal year. What we're planning on doing, because there are a number of different things that we could do under, under the umbrella of the tenant protections, and so what we're planning on doing is coming first with a study session in August to get an idea from council about what things they would like to prioritize, where they would like us to spend our time, because we do think it'll be a pretty time-consuming and lengthy process to get certain items put in place, because they do require outreach. We want to make sure that things that we do can be implemented appropriately. And, excuse me, so I think the idea is to come, come in August with a study session with, with an initial list of things that can be done, some of the practical considerations, and get direction from council on how to prioritize and what kind of timeline those thing, those different items would be on, based on council direction at that point.
Great, so just in a couple months, we'll see it.
Yeah, you'll see round one, we're expecting to bring forward to council at the August council meeting.
That's good to hear, and very encouraging.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's because we only have one meeting in July, isn't that correct?
Well, I think it's, primarily, we, we need to give ourselves a little bit of time to, to get this list together and, and have enough information for council to be able to provide us with appropriate direction. So we don't want to bring something that we haven't thought through well enough and, or not, you're not in position to give us direction on how to prioritize the different aspects.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, if there is no other business at the study session at this time, then we're going to adjourn this study session and move on to the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.